This is Parkersburg City Council meeting on Tuesday, May 27, 2025. One of the items on the agenda tonight is an ordinance amending the classification and compensation plan for part-time hourly positions and civil service non-exempt positions classifications. And I believe this has to do with the pay for our sanitation workers. And there's also a item amending the waste disposal fees, which is an increase of $4 a month. "To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Mr. President, a question of the committee is dated today from Justice President Reynolds. It says, "In following City Council Rules Number 16, City Council declares that all committees shall be empowered by tying off separate regular or special duties. Hereby, by myself, as a member of the Finance Committee, due to the resignation of Council Chairman Miss Rattler, that committee now consists of Ms. Derry, Ms. Chairman, and Council Members John Hough, Kowski, Grady, and Miss Reynolds." That's all.
Thank you. Do we have any votes signed for the public forum tonight?
We do. The first one is Cynthia Lockney.
Our public forum tonight is between Ms. Knight and Ms. Speaker, and that's something with the current Republicans speaking, and Republicans now.
Thank you. I am the representative for our library board, and we also have done a couple of real planning for other projects. But I wanted to give you an update on the library. We have two people have appointments working on one, which is replacing work on the building. We've already located a work review. The one that we have right now is called the office. Barn is been active for about 30 years, and the pest here or two has been kind of efficient about every month. It's a lot of things to do our obligations to the outside services that we're proud to report for the bus. So we decided we need to have a service selected of us, and it was something to be built. The other project we're looking at is one of the more organizers Williams Town, who's working with the city of Williams Town, and whose portion of the elementary school is still standing to be moved to become the new library. It'll be, we hope to be not quite five thousand years old, but right now, we do this run the library here. If she has any events, she has to move all the shelves and bags and everything, and, you know, it's quite a, and they have really good attendance for their programs. So we feel that it's something that we need to really do. The other thing I want to talk about is we're getting my first summer program for kids. Last year, we had almost right-hand children, it's kind of the elder center, and they get books when they come, three books. They, their vision's being, oh, they're really good. What I think what I think we should do is paint some pots or something, but they're, every week will be a different project. I think there are eight weeks towed between the June and July for the kids in our community, and it's all free. On May 31st, we're going to have Library Fest. This will be our second one. It will be held in the parking lot at the library. There'll be food trucks there, music, I think face painting for the kids, but it's kind of our kickoff to start our summer program. And it will be from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Hopefully, the weather will be decent on Saturday. So we hope you all can come out and see what's going on in the library. I think the Friends of the Library are going to be selling some books. People have done their books, they don't want anymore, and they go into the Friends of the Library, and then they reset the families, raise money for special things. So I hope you all can attend, and thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate that.
Next, Mr. Halliwell, Juliana Street.
Start my stopwatch here and make sure I don't go over time. Flyers are sometimes moving, we're talking a little bit too long, so if somebody will pull the plug on me, I'm sure if I get too windy. Appreciate having the time to chat with you all for a second about a concern that's come to my mind. I'm not a regular down here, and I do have this to do. Appreciate being put on the agenda, having an item on that I can talk about, and I appreciate Dr. Barry and the other folks joining with me and bringing this matter forward. The reason that I'm here is about 35 years ago, my wife and I moved back to our home here in Parkersburg from out of state, and since that time, we've had regular, reliable trash service at our home on Juliana Street. As you all know, we've had many administrations, mayors of all parties, Democrat, Republican, we've had all kinds of city councils at that time. We've had regular trash pickup problems for 35 years. For some reason, and I've heard various theories as to why, beginning this year, trash in Juliana Square, sometimes would be picked up, sometimes it wouldn't. Sometimes your recycling would be picked up, and sometimes your trash would be left. Sometimes it was reversed, and we had a stretch for about three weeks, we didn't have anything picked up. Williams Court Alley looked like something out of, I don't know, Baghdad or something. Just a bunch of trash laying out there. So I'm here to just ask this council to fix the problem. I don't know what needs to be done, but having our city not have reliable trash service isn't good for anybody. It's not good for the homeowners. It's not good for the property values. It's not good for the businesses. And I don't know why we've had three and a half decades where we could count on having our trash picked up when it's scheduled, and now we can't. Now, I've seen in the press various excuses or reasons or rationales, this is different and that's different. I don't know, it's been a lot of things different over 35 years, but we always had regular trash pickup. So, I mean, I didn't run for this job because I didn't want it, or any job. You see, I wouldn't have it. If you tried to give it to me today, couldn't give it to you, because it's, well, I won't say what it is, because y'all already have it better than I do, whether it is. So, I mean, I'm not trying to make anybody feel bad, I'm not trying to put anybody down. I'm just telling you what we've experienced. I've called down here, very nice people I've talked to. I'm not running down the trash bin, but I think they're probably doing a hard job for not very much money. I don't know the details of all that, because I'm not in charge of it. And unfortunately, I don't want to be. All I'm saying and asking is one thing, fix it. That's it.
Next, we have Sarah Lott-Bright, Division Street Extension. And after that, Brian Raits.
Good evening. We've got a lot of important issues on tonight's agenda, and there are several people here who want to speak. I hope that you will hear all of them on the topics that matter to them. This is our money that you're spending, and we deserve to be heard. We've got our attention. Curbside recycling has been temporarily suspended. If we are physically able and have sufficient transportation, we have been asked to sort and transport our recyclables to your facility at our expense for the city itself. We get it. It is imperative that the city restore the curbside pickup, all residents ASAP. To do that, you need more drivers and helpers, because we understand you are understaffed. If you would just pay a minimum starting hourly wage of $15 an hour, you could restore our service. CDL, CDL drivers, of course, could still start at a higher rate. I have heard that you currently have four to five drivers for multiple rounds across our entire city, plus the helpers. Yes, you are short-staffed, and it is your responsibility to fix the problem. It's not as if you don't have the funds. You have a pending budget resolution to spend $763,500 in previously unaccounted revenues. The Finance Department has been working hard to redistribute those revenues among the various departments, including approximately $173,000 transferred to the Capital Reserve Fund, and redistributing $90,000 from salaries and wages in the sanitation fund to overtime expense in the same fund. I'm asking you to put a pause on approving those reallocations of those funds until sufficient details can be provided. We need to be investing in city employees at an equal or greater rate than the capital required. That doesn't take into effect the proposed $4 per month sanitation increase on the intended tonight's own household, starting in July, that your Finance Director has estimated will bring in an additional $500,000. That doesn't count any carryover from the sanitation fund for this year. What are you waiting for? You have an ordinance on final reading tonight to amend Table 1 and the Classification Table. I'm asking that you send Table 1 back to the Personnel Committee for a further review. The proposed minimum wage is not the living wage for most of the hourly workers covered in this table, and you will not attack workers in some of the most depleted departments such as sanitation until you raise those wages. This city should not look like a third world country. The citizens of Parkersburg deserve better, and the signs of city influence per gram committed for playing how great we are do not outweigh the realities of driving through the city, looking at vacant lots, overgrown grass, and trash piled everywhere. City Council has the right and the duty to commit the funds to address these issues. Thank you.
Next is Brian Raits, from our library, Liquid Circle.
So I signed up just in case Cindy didn't speak on her own behalf, and she didn't. So I'll speak on her behalf. I've had the pleasure of working with Cindy now for five years. She's been a valuable asset for our library board. She brings a good mind, she looks at all the subjects, she does her own research on every matter, comes in front of us, and she's engaged with the library. She's a user of the library not only as a personal patient, but also as a grandma. Brings her grandchild to Storytime. She's involved in some reading program and so forth. And what did she do for her opportunity to come up here and speak tonight? She came up to talk about the park. So this is the kind of representative we do have on the library board. She serves in your interest. We do send you out to minutes and other activities that we do every month, and give you a report. She writes those minutes as the secretary, and she's also, as we put in there, she's your representative, so she's free to come here and speak to you all, or answer any of your questions. If you have any questions about the library, she wants to, she's made herself available, and her contact information is in those board emails every month that I send. So just thank you for your time, and I'd be considerate.
Next, we have Brian Hayden, 31th Street. Followed by Rusty Madison.
The phrase "if I told you so" will be replaced with "this easily predictable outcome" was identified early on and brought to your attention. In 2018, the City Council commissioned a report on the economic health of the city of Parkersburg. The bottom line of this report was that our executives and administration were, are grossly overcompensated, whereas there is a significant undercompensation of the labor trades.
Mr. Hayden, which item number are you talking about in the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, the resolution from Tuesday, March 11, 2025, to amend the rules and regulations regarding the public forum as written, adopted, and unamended does not empower the chair to pose this question, nor does it compel any speaker to answer. This is a usurpation of the resolution and is without cause according to Roberts Rule's orders. This is a breach of decorum by the chair. Now, in order to insulate the chair from further improper action, I begrudgingly and with protest state that I am addressing Agenda Item 8, Subsection 3 and 5. I shall now proceed, and I reclaim my time. The City Council at that time, the bottom line of this report was that executives and administration are grossly overcompensated where there is a significant undercompensation of the labor trades. This undercompensation is tantamount to exploitation of the labor trades. The City Council at that time, with some members who are still present, embraced this report by voting to make no changes to business as usual. Since then, the City Council has voted overwhelmingly to continue this exploitation, notwithstanding a single gratuitous increase for certain existing city employees. Absolutely no effort has been made to take action on the underlying failures of our classification and compensation plan. Combining this exploitation with a generally toxic culture perpetuated by the city's leadership, it is easily understandable that a recent op-ed in the News and Sentinel rightly condemned your patrician versus plekian dichotomy. In light of my complaints, I offer the following solutions. Motion to amend on Ordinance 3, the position a fire inspector created under Table 3, Civil Service Non-Exempt, CS-1A, to remove the potential conflicts of interest of serving at the pleasure of the mayor. Ordinance 5, motion to divide. 1, motion to approve the creation of the Housing Coordinator position at S4. 4, vote down or table the increase of the maximum salaries that are already overinflated. This action will only affect a small number of persons who are suitably positioned to bear the impact of an austerity policy as endorsed by the current mayor. 3, motion to commit Table 1 to the Personnel Committee until Finance Director can provide an updated table that reflects the appropriate wage increase in all position classifications that should have been enacted in 2018 with sufficiently year, sufficient yearly adjustments to facilitate full staffing. I remind the council that Representative of District 2 previously lamented from this diocese about that prior failure to act. How should this be financed? Auditor for the State, Mark Hunt, noted on April 3, 2025, that the city had a carryover of $2.9 million. This carryover is money taken from the taxpayer without any services provided. The city budget indicates that the sanitation fund has an excessive revenue, an amount of approximately $700,000. Taken together, that is over $3.5 million. This represents 10% of the entire city budget. As these funds are compelled to be taken from the taxpayer, we expect services that we pay for. Some present may believe that overcharging and then underdelivering on our services is an ethical way to talk business. I reclaim my time, sir.
You're done, you're four minutes up. I'm running this meeting. Take a seat. Thank you. You do not intend to disturb. Phil, Mr. Brown.
Next, we have Rusty Madison, Swan Street, followed by Michael Westbrook.
Okay. I've been planning on Swan Street for a while now, for a month, a couple of months. The pub, if I don't fix the problem, one's, one part of the road is keeping it. Whoever's here from the pub, thank you for listening up. And for two, our trash department deserves a raise before any of you, any, especially him. And for two, I want to talk to you about that toast you made about the 1918.
Mr. Madison, let's stick with what's on the.
No, I won't.
You won't shush me, sir. I'm running this meeting, okay? You can be removed. Talk about something that's on the agenda, or you'll be removed. It's that simple. This council's not.
Because he can post on Facebook, but.
That, we're not here, we're not talking about that.
I don't give a shit.
Okay. You're gonna take a seat, or I'll ask the officer to remove you. That's it.
Michael Westbrook, Juliana Street.
Fuck you guys, you guys work us. I fucking work.
First, I'd like to allow you to be, uh, argue my actions.
I could hear Hayden disagreeing.
Michael Westbrook.
Thank you.
Juliana Street.
Thank you.
So I'm here tonight to give a little bit of my own thought here. I keep telling everybody in the district, if you have issue with something, don't send us all an email. Let's all come out and start hugging about it. That's my idea. A lot of what I'm going to say will sound very similar to what Walt will say, because what's to do with that, I mean, we've talked about the trash issue, uh, I acknowledge them over the last few months. Again, it's a hard job. I don't know what their wages are. I've heard they're low. I've heard you can make more than being in the store or fast food than what you can make literally going around picking up our trash. That's not going to attract a lot of people. You know, I've heard, you know, hey, we can all take our recycling to the recycling center, which that sounds fine, except for most people probably aren't going to take the time to live up there, recycling into their car and drive it down. It doesn't solve the problems there of the trash. Because most people are, I would believe, instead of recycling and doing something that's a little good for our city, are going to throw it out in their garbage, which doesn't help the people that are working, and it doesn't help our environment. You know, I see that number 10 on the agenda today is talking about this, and I see that it's a proposed $4 increase. I will say when I'm for it or against that, but I will say council, I would very much appreciate an answer as to what will that $4 be used for. If it's for wages increases to the workers, I'm for it. If it's for anything else, against it. As Walt said, you know, we're in the historic district and pretty sure it's one of the largest tourist attractions in Parkersburg. Sure feels like, like the amount of groceries that we go through, and what I've heard from, can't think of the names, but it, it doesn't look good when you, you know, for some of us, it goes out to the back alley, you don't see it. For some of us, it goes directly in front of our houses, right in Juliana Street. So people that are new to the area, walking by looking, they see our trash and our recycling sitting out, and don't think that's what they're there to see. I think anything else I say will be more, unless repeated, the information that I've heard. I just ask that you, if that $4 increase is for the workers, then we go for it. If it's for anything else, I won't provide it to you.
Thanks, sir.
That's all we have, sir.
Thank you, ma'am, clerk. It's time to close our public forum, and see if we have a message from executive tonight.
I just wanted to quickly let everybody know that the smoking pools are open though if you can. I didn't see any of you guys out there that, that one day went to 60, 60 feet trees. But I do have to give some kudos to our engineer, Adam Stow. You know, I don't know that I've communicated this, but a lot of times we do a good project like the Southwood Slide. We have a firm that out of design, uh, from stem to stem. I mean, he took information from public input every year, make sure that we've got some additional shade out there. And then another big kudos, we had a youth certified pool operator, a young man by the name of Zaryn, in the Parks Department. He got certified, Everett, six, eight months ago? Something like that. New to that certification, and our Southwood Pool is a little complex. I don't get into all the details, but we make our own flooring over there, and he jumped in with both feet. And so myself and Everett, I'm not here tonight, but he asked me to play for PH and acupuncturism and all that stuff, but, so I just wanted to put that out there. But whatever the last day of school is in Wood County, the pool will be open under normal. And so that's all I have tonight, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Let them quit.
Item number one, a resolution reappointing Cindy Lockney, 1706 20th Street, Parkersburg Wood County Public Library Board for a term to expire June 23rd. Mr. President.
Dr. Neil.
Make a motion to accept the resolution. Is that okay?
We have a motion to second to prefer. Further questions from council. Hearing that, Madam Clerk, to move, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rectoro?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Resolution number two, please.
A resolution requesting a year-end budget revision for the General Fund, Parks, Recreation, Capital Reserve, and Sanitation.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cole.
You for adoption of the resolution?
Second. We have a motion and a second from council. Are there any questions from council? Mr. President. Yes, sir, Mr. Congressman.
Yeah, I see the 763, 500, an additional revenue coming in with the General Fund, and the way that we're spending that, I just had a few questions about some of the line numbers. On finance, we had $105,000 for BNO collections. We're raising that 40,000, taking it to 145,000. And I'm wanting to know who has that contract and what they do, and what the terms of that contract would be for the 145,000. Is that something?
My Eric, I can't answer. My, my, it's at the beginning, you can answer.
We engage a firm to identify businesses who are likely operating within settlements based on a database that they maintain, and then they send these businesses our BNO forms, get them registered with a business license, and compliant from a BNO standpoint and business license standpoint, usually standpoint.
And has the, I'm just wondering how effective that program is if they have paid for the 145 contractual service?
They are entitled to 50% of BNO collections. So if they.
That, that date, oh, that date looking, not 50% of all.
That, that date, oh, that date looking, not fifty percent of all B and O.
So, yes, they pay for themselves a hundred percent.
So is that a commission base like that only, or is there also a base amount?
No, commissional. For then, that's for two years after identification, so third year, it's all ours.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Giles while he's here?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Hubbard.
Um, under code administration, the contractual services, that extra sixty-five hundred, is that mostly grass and weeds or is that something else?
That is showing up that line now for, uh, items such as grass and weeds contract. Um, there are also cleanups that come out of that line, I think it's showing up that line. Again, this is for estimates, maybe at the fiscal year.
Um, if I can follow up, um, these probably would be bids under the twenty-five thousand, so they don't go out into the newspaper for bids. Is there a way that we're getting those contracts for cutting grass and weeds?
We put that out the bid.
Did, I mean, I understand if it's not over twenty-five thousand, we don't have to put it in the newspaper?
If it's estimated to cost twenty-five thousand and then during an entire year, then yeah, we put it out the bid.
Okay, we put it out like in a batch, so it's over twenty-five thousand?
We estimate that annually, we will spend over twenty-five thousand on the grass and weeds. So if we put it out the bid and ask for a unit price, so that we give, you know, the price quote on, that's how we put out the grass and weeds contract.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. Giles, these are all estimates. And after June thirtieth, then we'll have the Harbors, along with your home and city, that called End of Downs, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions for Mr. Giles, resolution number two. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, can we get the bill on two, please?
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Miss Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, resolution passes, ordinance on final reading, please.
And ordinance submitting and reenacting the classification and compensation plan for the City of Parkersburg, Table One, part-time hourly positions in Table Three, Civil Service, Non-Exemplar Position Classifications.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cool?
Need for adoption of the ordinance on first reading. Second.
We have a, we have a motion in a second, are there any questions from council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk to vote, please.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Miss Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ordinance passes number four, please.
Final reading, and ordinance submitting and reenacting the City of Parkersburg Policy and Procedure Manual, Section Nine, Subsection C, Sick Time Payoff Program. Mr. President.
Mrs. Hubbard.
I move to adopt the ordinance submitting and reenacting the City of Parkersburg Policy and Procedure Manual about the Sick Time Payoff Program.
Second. We have a motion in a second, are there any questions from council on number four? Hearing none, Madam Clerk to vote, please.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Miss Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Number five, please.
Final reading, and ordinance submitting and reenacting the City of Parkersburg Personnel Policy and Procedure Manual Position, Classification Schedule.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cool?
Need for adoption of the ordinance on final reading.
Second. We have a motion in a second, item five on final reading, are there any questions from council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk to vote, please.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Miss Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Ordinance to final reading passes, number six, please.
First reading, and ordinance authorizing the acquisition and construction of additions, benefits, and improvements to the sewer's portion of the existing public, mine, waterworks, and sewer system of the City of Parkersburg, and the financing of the costs thereof, not ever was provided, through the issuance by the City of not more than thirty million dollars in aggregate principal amount of combined waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds, Series Twenty Twenty-Five A, and not more than two and a half million in aggregate principal amount of combined waterworks and sewer system revenue bonds, Series Twenty Twenty-Five B, providing for the rights and remedies and security for the registered owners of such bonds, authorizing execution and delivery of all documents related to the issuance of such bonds, approving, ratifying, and confirming a bond purchase agreement relating to such bonds, authorizing the sale and providing for the terms and provisions of such bonds, and adopting other provisions related thereto.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cool?
Need for adoption of the ordinance?
Second. We have a motion in a second, do we have any questions from council?
Mr. Hubbard?
Mrs. Hubbard?
Um, I wonder if, if we, um, I know that the City of Parkersburg put seven hundred thousand into, oh, seven million, sorry, into, um, of the art money, into the water and sewer program. And I'm just wondering, and I know we're getting a filtration set, uh, system of, I think, twelve million. Could, could we just hear a quick explanation of what these bonds cover, just an overall picture? Thank you, Mr. Walt.
I'll start, if you'd such a care of the President, if you're correct. So, so the seven million dollars was for the water project only, and those were small diameter lines?
Small and large.
Small and large, both, I apologize.
And tank effort.
Yeah, and, and tank improvements. Um, so that was a totally separate project. I, I encourage you to look at bond financing or, or water sewer financing as individual financing deals. We finance the pub, city council approved rate increases for water. We use our money to supplement, and you have to go borrow less money. This is totally separate from those funds. This is different bonds, different forgivable loans, grants, you know, wherever it comes from, I J P C or or rural, whatever money comes from, that is a totally separate form. Now, I'll let you talk a little bit about the plan for it.
They're actually two separate, they call it combined, but water has to stand on water money and sewer has to stand on sewer money. This is strictly, it's sewer. It's a twenty-six million dollar project to replace, exactly, probably nine thousand feet of sewer interceptor that is currently pumped, considering it was built at a higher elevation for the building. Those pump stations are, it's time for a clear file. What we were gonna do is put the sewer deeper, backward, originally built in the fifties, and do away with pump stations, which are high maintenance, and that is pipeline. You, you have very little, I don't think, things on pipeline. Pump stations, it's a continual, but, that's over. If they are true.
We have any other questions from council on number six? Hearing none, Madam Clerk to vote, please.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Miss Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. Ordinance on first reading, number seven, please.
And ordinance submitting and reenacting Article nine twenty-seven oh one of the qualified ordinances of the City of Parkersburg with respect to adoption of rules and regulations and increasing rates and charges for sanitary sewer service.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cool?
Need for adoption of the ordinance?
Second. We have a motion in a second, are there any questions from council on number seven?
Mr. President.
Mr. Borkowski?
Just want to say, I'm able to attend a couple of the pub meetings here recently, and certainly impressed with the professional makeup of the board. And seeing that there's been no sewer increase since two thousand fourteen, uh, going on a four years, uh, two thousand seventeen, that increase ended. Uh, I'm in full support of this ordinance.
Good, sir, anybody else on council, wish to speak or another question? Hearing none, Madam Clerk to vote, please.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Miss Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, ordinance passes first reading, number eight, please.
And ordinance authorizing the design, acquisition, construction, and equipping of certain extensions, additions, benefits, and improvements to the existing sewer system of the City of Parkersburg.
Mr. President.
Mr. Brown?
Move to approve. Ordinance overriding providing navigation.
A motion approved, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, are there any questions from council? Hearing none, Madam Clerk to vote, please.
Ms. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes.
Miss Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rexrode?
Yes.
Mr. Borkowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daley?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, ordinance passes first reading, I believe that takes us down to number nine.
That was a spot for other things that there are, where we face to go with that, is that correct? Item number ten. And ordinance admitting Article nine fifty-five oh nine A, waste disposal, disposal fees by increasing fees from eighteen dollars to twenty-two dollars per month, effective July one, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. President.
Mr. Brown?
Move to approve the ordinance of Article nine, five five oh nine, waste disposal.
Second. We have a motion in a second, are there any questions from council on number ten?
Mr. President.
Mrs. Cool?
I have, um, a question for the mayor or for Eric, which everyone wants to answer this, the mayor can probably know the answer. No rates with the four dollars per month to give them a two hundred on the hour pay increase for senior vice drivers. Even though this four dollars is supposed to bring in approximately five hundred thousand dollars in revenue, how much of that revenue do we actually write off because people don't pay their sanitation bills?
I will say that we, we bill police fire and sanitation fees simultaneously, we call it a total bill, it's a significant, a hyper accurate, or something hyper accurate.
My estimate for fiscal twenty-six is two hundred and twenty thousand.
Two hundred and twenty thousand? So out of that?
Sanit- that's sanitation.
I'm sorry.
Sanitation.
Right, sanitation, two hundred and twenty thousand. So out of that five hundred thousand, we're gonna write off two hundred and twenty thousand, plus?
If I may, the total estimated revenue from the billing is three million, one hundred and nine thousand, so with the four dollars. And so, that two hundred and twenty thousand is estimated for the entire three, three point one, five hundred thousand.
Eric, could you repeat that, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you, I'm sorry.
With the four dollar increase. Is that better, right here? With the four dollar increase, I'm estimating three point one million in revenue.
That's how much this four dollar brings, yeah?
Total, that's a total, twenty-two dollars per month. And of that, I just paid right off about two hundred and twenty thousand of the three point one million total.
Mr. President, uh, Mrs. Hubbard, are you done?
Uh, yeah, with that one, thank you.
Mr. Hubbard?
Uh, for Mr. Giles, so the four dollar increase is an estimated five hundred and seventy-six thousand, is that correct, in revenue?
Five hundred and sixty-five thousand.
Okay. And how much of that goes towards the wage increase for two dollars?
For two dollars? I, I mean, here's the thing, I'm estimating a total of three million, a total revenue, three million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay, that's three million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, and this is all in the budget that you adopted here recently. Of that, three million, two hundred and fifty thousand. One million, four hundred and sixty thousand is personnel cost, wages, benefits, etc. Eight hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred is contractual service. Two hundred and eighty-three thousand is supplies. Two hundred thousand is transferred to capital reserve so that we can have money in there for when we need a package truck.
All the numbers that you're quoting right now, are those increased numbers or total with the budget?
Those are total in the budget.
Okay.
Okay? And this is where you can see where we're spending the money, right here. And, you know, there's also depreciation expense and the bad debt expense. Again, we're not gonna collect every dime that we build. Okay? So specifically, this five hundred thousand dollar increase is dedicated exclusively for that, that's not how this works. That's just not how it works. Okay? Well, how it works is, you have an estimated for total revenue and an estimated expenditure, that's how it works.
Okay, because I had done, I had asked you a few questions last week, I hadn't heard back. The five sixty-five revenue, it looks like, so we're increasing the bad debt expense, you had said two twenty, but we're not increasing it, we're increasing it about thirty-six thousand dollars of that five sixty-five, thirty-six thousand about will go to that?
Yes.
One hundred thousand will go to wages, and then we have, uh, we're increasing our capital reserve transfer to here by fifty thousand?
Two hundred thousand.
From one fifty to two hundred?
There hasn't been one fifty much.
Okay, so it's the same, not two hundred?
There, there has not been a transfer to capital reserve, uh, since fiscal twenty-three because fiscal twenty-four and fiscal twenty-five, we purchased package trucks with hardware money.
Okay. Well, my issue here is that whenever I was presented with the four dollar raise, I was thinking that was mostly to go to better wages so we could find more drivers, so that we could resume normal service, but it looks like only a hundred thousand of the five seventy-six is being used for that, so I'm thinking that we either need to lower the fee, the four dollar fee, or we need to do something about the wages with the five sixty-five, half a million dollars we get with increased revenue.
If I may also point out, you're also making up a fiscal fifteen or fiscal twenty twenty-five deficit of a hundred and sixty thousand. So you're, you know, before this rate increase, you're starting on, kind of hold by a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And add that just to the two hundred for capital reserve, there's three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That needs to happen, otherwise we're not gonna have any equipment over there. So three hundred and sixty thousand right on the top, that five hundred thousand, if you want to look at it that way. And then the rest of it is, uh, you know, personnel costs and, and other things here that, uh, you know, the city has not been and will not be immune from inflation. So, you know, costs go up year in and year out. You know, one thing about this budget is that it's a budget, it's an estimate. It's an estimate. Okay? The actual results differ from the budget. So when you, again, I don't think that it's proper to say, oh, well, I'm raising the rate at five hundred and some thousand to go to these specific things, when the fund in and of itself needs to operate as a whole.
Okay, that two hundred thousand dollar capital reserve transfer, is that good in any sanitation equipment specifically?
Yes. There's a year mark in there already for recycling for capital reserve. It is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar year mark, and then there's four hundred and some thousand contingent for capital outlay, which includes packer truck. Are we spending all that now? No. But we will when we need packer trucks.
Right. And then just to be clear, the capital reserve fund will go in with just sanitation-related projects, right? You go to any city project, police, fly the wall, streets. Right, thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. Bukowski? I'm going to try to maybe simplify this for us. And Eric Snaker, so you can correct me if I'm saying this doesn't jive. We're proposing to go from eighteen to twenty-two dollars. It's my understanding that that four dollar increase, well, it is not my understanding, but the fact of the matter is, we budgeted, voted on that budget prior to a two dollar increase for our sanitation workers. So if you look at that four dollar increase, we're looking at a three or four-year time through where our sanitation budget will be whole. We voted a two dollar increase on top of that, so now we're going to be upside down next year. We're going to have to raise rates just to maintain and to be able to provide services moving forward. And we have to keep in mind that this is an enterprise fund. We can only spend what we bring in, we can't subsidize. So if you look at it, we can do one of three things. And if anybody else has any ideas, I'd love to hear them. We can pay our sanitation workers and raise their rates so much that some of you may pay for them, but we're going to have a whole lot more people upset with us because our sanitation rates have gone through the roof. We can pay our sanitation workers and not raise our rates, and we can have sanitation workers with a good paying rate, and we'll have no equipment for them to pick up our trash. Or we can look at the elephant in the room, privatization. I don't think anybody on this council doesn't want to pay our sanitation. But for somebody to be a member of this body and to put out there on social media and to be quoted to say that there's a simple solution, if there's such a simple solution, it would already have been taken care of. Bring those simple solutions to the table, let us go up or down, but don't sit there. I think it's irresponsible for members of this body to go out to the public and tell them it's simple, just pay them more without recurring ongoing revenue to fund forever pay raises. Now, if you want to be told what you want to hear, there's probably people up here that'll do that for you, but I'm not that guy. I'm going to take the cold hard truth, and I'm going to work to find a solution and give us a reliable service at a reasonable rate, and I'll probably have much more say tomorrow night, thank you. And I'm in favor of the four dollar raise because we need it.
Mr. President?
Ms. Pup?
Eric, you told me to look at the budget, and I did. I looked at the balance sheet, I looked at the accounts, some of the profit and loss. I went through each year from two thousand eighteen, so I might need to sit down with you and do this, but we had one year in two thousand eighteen where we started off with a deficit. But according to this, there's been no deficit since two thousand eighteen. I looked at the ending fund balance and sanitation. We had actuals, two thousand eighteen, we had eight hundred and eighty-two thousand to the good. In two thousand nineteen, we had million ten to the good. In two thousand twenty, we had one thou, that was ARPA money, I did it. In twenty-one, we had one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand. In two hundred twenty-two, we had two million, twenty-eight thousand. In twenty-three, twenty-four, we had three million to the good. I don't see, I have not been able to find where we have deficits. It's not showing up in either the balance sheet or the budgets itself. So when you say we have a deficit, I haven't been able to find it.
So all of those fund balance numbers that you just read off, those are all inclusive of capital assets. Okay, that includes packer trucks, that includes the MRF, the building. Okay, that includes all of the equipment in that building, the conveyors, the, you know, everything that it takes to make this operation work is included in those numbers. And you had noted that there was an increase, and I think you said fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, or whatever it was. But this council voted to transfer, in between fiscal twenty-three and twenty-four, this council voted to transfer a total of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars into the sanitation fund. Okay, this council did that. Or not this, the last council, I apologize. Okay, and then also, ARPA, okay, purchased two very expensive packer trucks in the last year, okay, which also goes into that fund balance. So if you want to look at what is completely split off, and you can do that on the balance sheet, so just count cash, cash and receivables, okay, and then go down and reduce your payables, okay, and then you'll get a much better picture of how much money is actually sitting in sanitation fund. Okay? Now, the other thing that I want to address is, if you look at the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, okay, we budgeted a deficit of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. We're in that budget right now. So there's your projected deficit. Okay? And so, you know, between those two years, this twenty-three and twenty-four, okay, there was fund balance transferred in, okay, but it is inclusive of all capital assets.
Well, I, that's been the frustration, is that when I look at the budget we've given, what I showed is an intergovernmental transfer in spend in twenty-three, twenty-four of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. So I'm not, I, it's not showing, the balance sheets have never had any of this that you gave, and then, so it's just, I agree with you, Andrew, that we really need to see the facts and figures because...
Well, man, don't be respectful, those aren't the facts and figures, okay? I'm not, and please believe me when I tell you this. I have six years of college and a CPA license to understand accounting, and so what I'm telling you, I'm trying to explain it to you in plain terms, which, without sounding condescending, okay, trying to be respectful, all right? What I'm telling you is, is those numbers, transfers in, fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four, eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars. Five hundred and seventy thousand of that was packer trucks from ARPA fund. Three hundred and some thousand was what council would authorize to transfer in the previous year, that five hundred and eighty-two thousand, same thing, council would authorize that transfer. Okay, there's a black and white explanation for everything that you want to know. And it's all, it's all right there, and what you're looking at, those are the facts.
The ARPA money doesn't show up on, in the budget. I mean, I don't know, when you're asking me to look at the budget, it's not showing. All I'm saying is that my back of the balance sheet, my back of the budget, the ARPA money does not show transfer in for the packer trucks or for some of these other things. They're not easily accessible to, I'm not an accountant, but I can look at budgets and say, oh, that doesn't show up, you know, like, in here. I'm not trying to argue with you, I'm just saying, it's not easily accessible for me to understand why there's a deficit. When I look at the bottom lines, I'm not seeing it.
But again, if you look at the audit report, if I may, look, if you look at the audit report, okay, which is given to all of you, you know, the balance sheets on the audit report, okay, they will tell you how much of the fund balances is invested in capital assets, okay?
I make a question?
Same thing.
Mr. President?
Dr. Daley?
When she's done, I just want to...
I'm sorry?
Wouldn't miss that, I just want to...
Okay. Are you done, Mrs. Pup? Dr. Daley, did you have something?
So, yes, I'm a doctor, I'm a young, I would not want to be your doctor. But what I think you're saying, because I'm a very basic person, pediatrician, simple mind, sanitation, we had to put a lot of money into it just to make it whole, and those are the deposits, you're transferring money from one thing to another in order for it to not be upside down, correct?
Yes. That was the intention, where there's more proposed, so that's...
And then what Andrew said makes sense, that at some point we will flip and be upside down again because it's an enterprise fund. And if we don't continue to put money back in, there is a possibility we start at a deficit like we did last.
With the original four point two percent and four dollar increase in the raise, I anticipated that that would carry us on, be able to provide calls for sanitation staff for the next three years without having to raise the rates now. I don't think we could do that. I think we'll have to, we might be able next year to hold off, but figuring for that is definitely, if we aren't. If we are able to avoid a rate increase next year, the year after that is certain.
This way, thank you.
Mr. President? Mr. Duff?
So what is not making sense to me about what you just said, Ms. Daly, is, okay, so we need the four dollars just so we can keep running, stay in the positive as an enterprise fund, but are we not transferring two hundred thousand dollars out of sanitation to pay for things that are non-sanitationary?
That is false, completely false.
If I may, non-accountable explains. So any time the City of Parkersburg buys capital equipment, which the definition of that is, how much does it have to cost?
Five thousand or more.
Five thousand or more. It's purchased for accounting rules and transparency and audit findings, it's purchased out of the capital reserve fund. Whether it's a lawnmower, a sanitation truck, a recycling truck, a pickup truck, all capital equipment and assets are purchased out of the capital fund. So that fund, sanitation, puts, money's transferred out of there for their purchase of those trucks. We could have, you probably didn't throw something at me, we could probably have a capital fund for sanitation only if we wanted to. I mean, but we buy all of our capital stuff, anything that costs five thousand dollars or more is purchased out of capital. That's how we budget, we have to show the auditor that this is what we're planning on spending on capital. And that's not just rolling stock, it can be, you know, it can be, I don't know, engineering stuff, maybe from time to time, you know, things of that nature. So that's, so it's not all equipment, regardless of the park, fire trucks. Chief's got a fire truck coming, and it's supposed to be somewhere, anyway. It's going to be purchased out of that fund. It was budgeted, that's where the money was appropriated, that's where it sat for two or three years, and we closed that gap with ARPA funds, I think. And, but it all went in there, and then that's where the check's written out of that fund. That's how we document and demonstrate buying capital equipment. All that stuff is bought out of capital fund. So his estimate for packer trucks, and it might sit there for two, I mean, we've had stuff get carried over for years, saving a little bit at a time. I think, I mean, at least one fire truck chief, we did three years probably. We did that with the first round of sanitation stuff before we got the ARPA. So we did that with skid steers, backos. We save for things that we anticipate, particularly big ticket items, which, you know, some of those twenty-six thousand dollars or more vehicles are super priced. Back truck, we did that. How many, flusher truck, we did that. Flusher truck, we did that.
Do we have any more discussion under discussion early from city council?
The rain ordinance?
Yeah, number ten, number ten, right? Let's go right to number ten.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more discussion on number ten? Hearing none, let her put the vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Huffman?
No.
Mr. Rector?
Yes.
Mr. Bukowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, when Ms. passes. And now we're going to discussion early. We have a motion to, for discussion from city council. Mr. President, I think it's everyone that needs to talk, and that is, Paul and Anthony, thank you. Motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Get the vote on the adjourn, let her put it.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Huffman?
Yes.
Mr. Rector?
Yes.
Mr. Bukowski?
Yes.
Ms. Daly?
Yes.
Mr. Reynolds?
Yes. We're going to have a city council meeting, the next meeting is going to be on the tenth of June, and following this meeting, we have URA. We'll start URA in about five minutes.